Thirty seconds, Mr. Vice President.
All right. All right, it is 7:00 PM. Good evening, everyone. I am calling this meeting to order of the school board. It is 7:00 PM. Roll call. It appears that everybody is present, all board members along with Dr. Hendricks, Mr. Trippenfeldus, and Dr. Stokes, except for Dr. Ingrid Schwartz-Wolff. And in her absence as Vice President, I will be running tonight's meeting. With that, I would ask you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, at this time, I would like to make a few comments. So I want to start again by thanking you all for taking the time to join us this evening. Obviously, this is a very difficult and frustrating time for our district. Parents, teachers, and staff are looking for information as to what our plans are for the coming semester. We understand that while some parents want the strictest guidelines possible, others feel that many of the proposed protocols are superfluous. We realize that some parents will still have the ability to work from home, while others have been called back to the workplace as businesses continue to open up throughout the area. We know that our teachers are concerned about their well-being and want to make sure their voices are being heard. Our administration is in the midst of finalizing a plan that addresses these concerns, adheres to CDC, state, and county guidelines, is agreeable to teachers and staff, and most importantly, keeps our children safe. Furthermore, our administrators are creating guidelines that fit the unique and demanding needs of our district, a very detailed framework covering all aspects of educating our kids, from the time they get on the bus until the time they are done with their day. As a parent of children in elementary and middle school, I am every bit as concerned as any other parent in our district as to how this plan will look. Like you, I want to make sure my children are safe and that the teachers and staff are able to teach and work in a safe and comfortable environment. With that said, I want to make sure you are all aware that we will be releasing and voting on our official school reopening plan during the special in-person school board meeting being held at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, July 22. A draft of this document should be available to the public by the end of this week. Hopefully, any lingering questions or concerns will be addressed. Finally, I want to mention that along with questions about reopening, our administrators have received and responded to inquiries related to diversity concerns in our district. There have been some valuable conversations with community members that have reached out to our administration to address this topic. Allow me to again state that I'm a parent in this district. As a parent, a board member, a Latino, and the proud father of two beautiful daughters from a diverse background, this is an especially important topic to me. The school town of Munster has been working on social and emotional learning, diversity and inclusion training, and cultural awareness long before this became a trending topic on social media. This district certainly has work to do regarding many issues in this area, but this is an ongoing opportunity that will continue for years to come. This is growth we look forward to continuing as a district and a close-knit community. As we work towards a plan to reopen our schools this fall, rest assured that the topic of diversity and inclusion will remain a priority. In order to succeed, we need the support of our community to complete the Herculean task of getting our schools open in the safest way possible for our teachers, our staff, and our students. This is an unprecedented situation, and we are all doing our best to work through it. Please continue to contact the district with any concerns you might have regarding this or any other issues in regards to the school town of Munster. Thank you. At this time, I would like to now read a statement regarding public comment. All comments may be submitted to publiccomment@munster.us. The board will review these comments at a later date. Now, I would like to ask Mr. Trippenfeldus to read items 2.1 through 2.4 as we move into discussing our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. I will begin. First of all, I'll thumbs up if you can hear me, someone please, so I know I'm coming through. Okay, good. We will start with the consent agenda items, which, as you said, are 2.1 through 2.4. Item 2.1 is the approval of the minutes, which is available online through Board Docs on our website. And obviously, you as board members have seen it, and it's on the screen right now. So it would be the minutes from the June 8 meeting that we had last month. Item 2.2 is approval of the county's payable voucher register for the last month. Item 2.3 is approval of the payroll voucher register. Item 2.4 is the personnel report, which is included. And I will just highlight for you, the first one shows resignations that have been submitted for the conclusion of the 1920 school year. You can see those. We did have to eliminate one position and ended up being a RIF, and that was a, the next line, that was a person we had hired to replace a maternity leave, and that maternity leave was over. And so we ended up with that person who actually had a regular contract. So to end a regular contract, you have to do a RIF through that. It wasn't because of finances, it was because the position was not available, obviously, after the maternity leave was over. We have one maternity leave recommendation for you for the next school year, as you can see there. And then the recommendations for employment. We have, we're proud to say that we have hired someone to be an occupational therapist for us. We have, obviously, a teacher in exceptional achievers department, a reading specialist at Frank Hammond, a teacher, and will be a kindergarten teacher at Eads. And then we have two of our coaches there. I would anticipate seeing a few more coaches our next meeting because we're waiting for a few background checks to come through before we approve them. But that is the personnel report for this month.
All right. Would any board members like any of the items to be broken down individually?
No.
Okay.
Then the administration would recommend that the board approve items 2.1 through 2.4, including as the consent agenda items.
I will ask for a motion in a second.
John Dougherty, so moved.
Melissa Higginson, second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will now call for a vote. Mrs. Higginson.
John Castro.
Aye.
John Dougherty.
Aye.
Ron Estojic.
Aye.
Melissa Higginson, aye.
The ayes. And obviously, Dr. Schwartz-Wolff isn't here, so four, nothing. Motion passes. We will now move on to action items. 3.1, donations. Can I have a motion to approve donations as presented?
So moved. John, 32nd.
Thank you, John. Is there any discussion? Mr. Trippenfeldus?
Yeah, I would add, you'll see on your screen showing up, and our people watching online should see that. These are the donations, first of all, for Munster High School. And you'll see those, a large number from the Booster Club. We did have a donation for the African-American Culture Club that we're having at the school next year. That was very nice. And then you'll see one donation to the theater from Kappa Kappa Kappa. But as you see the Booster Club, if you do the quick math, I think that's over $25,000 that the Booster Club is doing there. So that is what's going to the high school. The middle school, a little bit smaller. They have something from BookTix that they did that will be a donation, but it is listed for what they had there.
Well, thank you very much, everyone, for those donations, and especially to the very generous donation from the Booster Club. Mrs. Higginson, excuse me, any further discussion? All right, seeing none. Mrs. Higginson, will you please call the roll?
John Castro.
Aye.
John Dougherty.
Aye.
Ron Estojic.
Aye.
Melissa Higginson, aye.
All right, motion carries, four, zero. We will now move on to Section 3.2, fundraisers. Can I have a motion to approve fundraisers as presented?
So moved, Melissa Higginson.
Second.
Was that you, Ron?
Ron Estojic, second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, Mr. Trippenfeldus?
As you can see, there are a few of these, there are extracurricular groups that are planning those things. Obviously, that's assuming that school will be in session, but those will need to be approved prior to. So, and you can see the projected profit for some of them. I did get a very, it was, I think, one said something about your sales of delicious treats. I got a neat kick about that. So in their request, I think they're already advertising.
Love that. Marketing rules. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will now call for a vote. Mrs. Higginson.
John Castro.
Aye.
John Dougherty.
Aye.
Ron Estojic.
Aye.
Melissa Higginson, aye.
Motion carries, four to zero. Moving on to Section 3.3, authorization to hire staff. I will now ask for a motion to approve authorization for the superintendent to hire staff prior to the start of the 2020, 2021 school year as presented.
Melissa Higginson, so moved.
Ron Estojic, second.
Thank you, Ron. Any discussion?
This is something we do every year, right before school, correct, Steve?
Yes, it is. This is something that we want to make sure that we have approval to if we have any last-minute resignations. We currently have one, I think, certified position we're still trying to fill. And we are going to probably try to fill several instructional assistant positions to help us with some of those situations when we may need some help supervising lunch at all the levels. And we'll be hiring an extra custodian for every one of the buildings, which we've talked about, and you guys know, but that's going to probably come maybe between the July 20th, 22nd meeting and the first day of school. But it is very typical, Mr. Estojic, and we usually don't hire administrative staff that way, but obviously, teachers and the other people who will need to service our students.
Mr. Trippenfeldus, I was just going to clarify as well, this is also part of, the reason being that we will not be able to meet in time to hire staff, correct?
Yes, if you look, the August board meeting, which will be following that July 22nd, probably will not be until we have to actually be into school. And so we want to make sure we get that done. And that if we offer a position, we have the ability to fill that. And so it is very common. We put this in every July board meeting, so, yes.
Correct.
Excellent. And then you always report to us the next month, so.
Absolutely. You will still, you still get a chance to approve that or not approve it. So yes, you will be aware of it. And a lot of times, we will send that information out too, so you're made aware.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, excellent. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I will now ask for a vote. Mrs. Higginson.
John Castro.
Aye.
John Dougherty.
Aye.
Ron Estojic.
Aye.
Melissa Higginson, aye.
Motion carries, four to zero. Moving on to Section 3.4, Little Mustang Tuition Rates for the 2020, 2021 school year. Looking for a motion to approve the Little Mustang Tuition Rates for the 2020, 2021 school year as presented.
John Dougherty, so moved.
Melissa Higginson, second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Is this, is this tuition for, this is obviously for the preschool at Frank Hammond, is this tuition for all students?
No, this is tuition only for individual students who do not have an identified disability. So all students who have an identified disability attend our early childhood program free of charge with the exception of a consumable fee, which we'll talk about next.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for that clarification. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I will now ask for a vote. Mrs. Higginson.
John Castro.
Aye.
John Dougherty.
Aye.
Ron Estojic.
Aye.
Melissa Higginson, aye.
Motion carries, four, zero. We will now move to Section 3.5, Little Mustang Material Fees for the 2020, 2021 school year. May I hear a motion to approve the Little Mustang Material Fees for the 2020, 2021 school year as presented?
So moved.
Melissa Higginson.
Second, Ron Estojic.
Okay, so I have a motion from Melissa Higginson, and I have a second from Ron Estojic. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Mrs. Sivikovich, did you want to just shut down those fees as well?
Sure. Let me just give a clarification that this would be a materials fee for all students, whether identified with a disability or not. And again, this is a materials fee for the consumables that the, our little ones, our three and four years old, will be utilizing through their early childhood program.
Understood. Thank you again for that clarification. Are there any, is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I will now ask for a vote. Mrs. Higginson, will you please read the roll?
John Castro.
Aye.
John Dougherty.
Aye.
Ron Estojic.
Aye.
Melissa Higginson, aye.
Motion carries, four to zero. We'll now move to Section 3.6, the 504 Agreement with PCG Indiana Incorporated. I would like to hear a motion to approve the 504 Agreement with PCG Indiana Incorporated as presented.
John Dougherty, so moved.
Melissa Higginson, second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to add, our attorney had a chance to review this, am I correct?
You are correct. This contract actually took quite some time because the attorney did have some concerns within the contract. We worked very closely with PCG as well as with our counsel, Angela Jones, to make sure that all of the stipulations in the contract were agreeable.
Thank you.
And just a clarification as well, PCG is the company which oversees and runs the IP system for the state of Indiana. So it has a long history of being able to house and make sure all of the legal requirements of a 504 are in place. So we will have uniform 504s throughout the entire district in a centralized location for them to be stored electronically. In addition, there is an EdPlan Connect connected with this particular program, which allows for parents to electronically sign.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That sounds like a very robust program and explanation. At this time, I will call for a vote, unless there's any further discussion. Mrs. Higginson, will you please read the roll?
John Castro.
Aye.
John Dougherty.
Aye.
Ron Estojic.
Aye.
Melissa Higginson, aye.
Motion carries, four to zero. Moving on to Section 3.7, Food Service Agreement with St. Paul's Lutheran Church and School for the 2020, 2021 school year. Can I hear a motion to approve the food service agreement with St. Paul's for the 2020, 2021 school year as presented?
Dougherty, so moved. Ron Estojic, second.
Is there any discussion?
Steve, have you been doing this?
Yeah, this is, this food service agreement, Paul's is something that we do every year. The minor changes that have been put into it is we will increase the cost of the lunches by 10 cents due to the PLE calculation or the Paid Lunch Equity calculation run by the USDA. We also put in a line for flexibility with COVID-19. Those are the minor changes that we had.
We've been doing this for years, right, Bill?
Yes, sir.
And Attorney Jones reviewed this, Bill?
It's been on Board Docs. I did not send this to her separately. Again, this has been used for many years. And to the best of my knowledge, the only change we made was the 10 cents, like we did last year as well, and the last couple paragraphs on COVID, just giving us flexibility in case school, if something happened from the governor or with COVID-19 cases.
I did see it on Board Docs this morning, and I did review it and am okay with the terms and conditions.
Thank you. Who's signing on our behalf? Will it be you, Bill, or will it be the superintendent?
Usually on this, I do believe it's the superintendent.
You're good. Thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will now call for a vote. Mrs. Higginson.
John Castro.
Aye.
John Dougherty.
Aye.
Ron Estojic.
Aye.
Melissa Higginson, aye.
Motion carries, four to zero. I'm moving on now to Section 3.8, Recommendation for Purchase from Dell for $1.835 million. I'm looking for a motion to approve a recommendation for purchase from Dell in the amount of $1,835,388.60 as presented.
So moved, Melissa Higginson.
Second, Ron Estojic.
And I'd like to hear more about the purchase.
I was going to say, I'm sure there will be discussion.
Who's, Bill going to discuss this?
Yes, I'm going to start talking. Before I do, on the previous contract, I misspoke when I said the superintendent. I do believe it's the treasurer that will sign that previous contract, so I apologize for that mistake.
No problem, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
As we have talked in previous meetings and work sessions, especially the last work session as well, we wanted to upgrade our technology and infrastructure. These next two recommendations are for student laptops and teacher laptops respectfully. We recommend that the least purchase of the equipment from Dell is set forth in a special purchase method.
Mr. Melby, what do you mean by a special purchase method?
Okay, so there's, we worked with Jeff Quackenbush since we were able to show a large savings by going directly to Dell on this. We were able to do a special purchase process. There's some, obviously, if you go directly to the source, you have an ability to make some money. Also, we do have some programs with Dell right now that we would be able to continue. If we went with a different source, we may not be able to continue those. So we shared all those documents with Jeff Quackenbush. We showed the savings that we had, and we were able to do the special purchase process.
So this is just laptops, fifth through 12th grade, or fourth through 12th grade?
I do believe it's, for this, it's Chromebooks for fourth and fifth grade and laptops for sixth through 12th grade, as well as some licenses and cards and so on. Jeremy, or Ms. Podsko, Mr. Podsko, if I misspoke, please tell me.
No, you are correct. Again, essentially, we're replacing everything, grades four and five, because fourth grade Chromebooks are just obsolete. We actually got them through a grant right when Mrs. Gilbert came on board. So it was time for them to go. Fifth grade, we're retiring the laptops and switching those kids to Chromebooks. And then we are replacing our ancient laptops, six through 12. And the original purchase was done back in 2011. I think three years after we had them, Dell actually swapped them all out at no cost, because we had some parts difficulties, which again, part of the warranty package that we had with them is either they fixed or replaced it. So they literally replaced all of our laptops with the current ones that we have right now at no cost to the district. And since then, these have been working, for the most part, great, but it's also no time for them to be retired.
Like a lifespan of these computers, would you guess?
I would say four to five years, because we did try to beef them up a little bit, just to get more life out of them. Not to mention, again, they're smaller, they're more rugged. That was one of the requirements that Dr. Hendricks had. He also put one through the wringer himself, so it took a, you know, a pretty good beating. And yeah, it's just a little bit better specs, a little bit nicer machines, and hopefully, we'll get four to five years out of them easily.
What kind of screens do they have?
They have a slightly smaller screen. Our original laptops had a 14-inch screen. These have 13, like and a half, touchscreens.
Touchscreen, a touchscreen is great, because they can interact with whiteboards and things like that.
Exactly. Yep, so yes, you know, touchscreen with all these laptops. Chromebooks, I'm not sure if they have it, because again, Chrome's are pretty cheap to begin with. But the laptops, we do have touchscreen.
Mr. Melby?
Yes, sir. Just a clarification, you mentioned the name Jeff Quackenbush. For folks who may not be aware, that is our bond counsel. Yes, sir.
And just out of curiosity, why were we working with Mr. Quackenbush in regards to this purchase?
Anytime we're purchasing a large amount, we want to make sure we're following all the proper steps, make sure the school town of Munster is doing its due diligence to do everything it can to make sure we're following the laws. So we checked with him, we showed him our numbers up we had, and he said that was the best process to go.
Understood.
And Bill, what fund did this come out of?
This will be from TBR, Tech Pick Rentals. So this is over a four-year period, the payments.
Thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will now call for a vote. Mrs. Higginson.
John Castro.
Aye.
John Dougherty.
Aye.
Ron Estojic.
Aye.
Melissa Higginson, aye.
Motion carries, four to zero. Next, we have Section 3.9, Recommendation for Purchase from Dell in the amount of $404,175.48. I'm looking for a motion to approve that recommendation for that purchase. Again, that's $404,175.48 as presented.
So moved, Ron Estojic. John Dougherty, second.
Any discussion?
Yes, as I've already spoken, said before, we've talked at many work sessions and previous meetings about upgrading our technology. This is, among other things, this will get laptops for our staff, our non-certs and administrators, and there are other things as well. So as the administration, we recommend the purchase of equipment from Dell as set forth in a special purchase method.
Bill didn't mention, those are predominantly all teacher laptops. I think you said non-certified admin, but it's predominantly all teacher laptops and the equipment that lead in the classroom, correct, Bill?
Yes, sir. It's things that help the classroom, as well as laptops to go home, as well as, again, there is some secretaries and so on that will be getting some upgraded laptops and the nurse and so on. But yes, I'm sorry if I misspoke again there, but yes, it's more just laptops, but that's the large portion of it.
Bill, this came in at a price less than expected, correct?
Yes, sir. Considerably lower.
Okay. Any further discussion on this topic? All right, seeing none, I will now call for a vote. Mrs. Higginson.
John Castro.
Aye.
John Dougherty.
Aye.
Ron Estojic.
Aye.
Melissa Higginson, aye.
Motion carries, four to zero. Moving on to Section 3.10, Recommendation for Purchase, Cintas Contract. Looking for a motion to approve that recommendation for purchase in regard to the Cintas Contract as presented.
John Dougherty, so moved.
Melissa Higginson, second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Again, we recommend the purchase contract for disinfectant sanitizer and related cleaning products from Cintas as set forth in a special purchase method. I've done a lot of research, and we've tried to purchase a lot of cleaning materials over the last months. Some of them are very hard to come from, come by. This will assure us to get the cleaning supplies that we need. I also did a cost analysis over a two-year period, the next two years, and I believe we will also save a considerable amount of money over that two-year period.
And again, I'm assuming folks are familiar, but this is a well-known company, upstanding, embedded.
Very reputable company. Yes, and I've also touched, reached out to other schools that have had them or switching to them at the same time as we are.
Understood. Okay, is there any further discussion?
Did our attorney have a chance to review all of this?
I'll let Angela talk for herself on that one. But I know the answer is yes, but I'll let her talk.
Okay.
Yes, I had a chance to review this on Board Docs just this morning and yesterday.
Any concerns?
I have no concerns with this.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I will now call for a vote. Mrs. Higginson, please read the roll. I think you are still muted, Melissa.
Unmute. John Castro.
Aye.
John Dougherty.
Aye.
Ron Estojic.
Aye.
Melissa Higginson, aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Moving on to section 3.11. Lunch and breakfast prices for the 2020-2021 school year. Can you motion to approve lunch and breakfast prices for the 2020-2021 school year?
I'm moved, Melissa Higginson.
Second, Ron Estojic.
I hear in a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Melby, I'm assuming this is the same 10-cent increase?
Thank you. Yes, yes, that's a 10 cent increase. We recommend the following breakfast and lunch pricing for the 2020-2021 school year. It's a 10 cent increase following the paid lunch equity calculation that we've already talked about with St. Paul's, which is the minimum that we can increase. Just like last year, the PLE had us raise 22 cents, but we did 10 cents last year. We'll do another 10 cents this year, so we'll only be 2 cents behind.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, I will now call for a vote. Mrs. Higginson, we please read the roll.
John Castro.
Aye.
John Dougherty.
Aye.
Ron Estojic.
Aye.
Melissa Higginson, aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Section 3.12, course fees for elementary, middle school, and high school for the 2020-2021 school year. I'm looking for a motion to approve those course fees for elementary, middle, and high school for the 2020-21 school year as presented.
So moved, Ron Estojic.
John Dougherty, second.
Is there any, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I I just want to say that to the teams and the buildings and at the administrative office that that put these together. This is a very laborious and and time-intensive process, so my thanks goes out to everyone involved.
I second that, too.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you very much.
It's, that is not easy work.
Absolutely. Appreciate all the hard work that was put into into this. And I know Mrs. Higginson can empathize as a teacher. She was giving some examples of some of the granularity that they need to get into in order to put forth these fees and really calculate these accurately. So thank you again to everybody for putting their time in and getting this done.
I just did want to add that they, all these documents are available on Board Docs, so and they're on the public thing. So anybody wants to see them, they can. And the elementary is listed by grade level, and then the secondary is obviously listed by each class or course that a student takes.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks for bringing that up because every year we do get questions as to why there's fees, what these fees are, where these fees come from. And I feel like this has been a little bit more fleshed out this year than it has been in the past, so. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll now call for a vote. Mrs. Higginson, we please read the roll.
John Castro.
Aye.
John Dougherty.
Aye.
Ron Estojic.
Aye.
Melissa Higginson.
Motion carries four to zero. Moving on to general information and discussion items. Item 4.1, the new mileage rate. Mr. Melby, I believe you might be addressing this, new rate? Or?
You want me to take it, Bill? Because I can.
Sure, go ahead.
Stephen Fellis, please. Thank you.
As you guys know, the board, and this is more for the public, the board already has a policy that we will adopt the federal mileage rate. And so the federal government sets their rate in January, and then in July, we go ahead and approve ours for the following school year. That's why this is not a a vulnerable item. It is really just notification because our policy also says that we must notify the board or keep you aware of what that rate will be for the next school year. So this will be done for any of our teachers or staff that have professional development where they claim mileage. And this will be the 57.5 cents per mile as it is with the federal government and their mileage rate per DM. Or per mile, sorry, not per.
Understood. Is there any further discussion on this matter or any any other questions? Just one kind of silly one, Mr. Trippenfeldus. Are we rounding up on that half cent?
No, we don't. We actually calculate to the half cent because that's what the federal government does. So now, when we actually calculate someone's final penny, yes, we will have to round when we reimburse somebody. But the calculation, we use 57.5.
Understood. Thank you very much, sir. All right, moving on to the Director of Financial Operations report, Mr. Melby.
Yes, again, speaking in our last work session, we did exceed where we thought we would be. Our fund balances are a little bit higher than we thought they would be by the end of the end of June, which was good. A major impact was what I'm going to talk about. Education fund, there's really nothing out of the ordinary. We did know we'd have the stipends for teachers on the back end, the second portion of that. But there's really nothing out of the ordinary there. In our tax drawing funds, we did receive what we felt we would receive pre-COVID. So all along, we were talking if we had any issues with cash flow in those funds, we would use rainy day. Obviously, that is not needed. If you look at our our operations fund or referendum fund and our debt, we are fine in all of those because we received what we thought we would. Now, we will will obviously track this moving forward. This is something that could be an issue maybe in November and December. So we will continue to track the numbers. And if we are seeing that there could be an issue then in collecting our tax draw, we will use the same philosophy of using rainy day to cover the short loss.
Mr. Melby, in regard to those tax draws, I understand you're not a county employee, and you don't know everything about how these monies came tumbling in. But I do remember hearing that initially there was confidence in mortgage escrow accounts that were gonna, that were essentially not going to fail. On top of that, it sounds like basically people pay their their taxes based on our draw. Is that a fair conclusion?
That's all I could think. I could tell you we received as much as we thought we would receive in all of our, on our tax draw. So I would have to believe, yes, sir.
Excellent. Are there any other questions for Mr. Melby in regards to the financial report? All right. Seeing none, we will now move to item 6.1, the superintendent's report. Dr. Hendricks.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Three items I kind of wanted to talk about tonight. Construction projects. Those folks who've been driving around probably saw today more of our driveways being chewed up and getting ready for repave. In fact, we're all parking somewhere besides in the central office parking lot. But we have the high school, part of the middle school, middle school front drive, and central office drive. And also, I believe Frank Hammond is going to have some parts of it done as well. So over the next few weeks, we're going to see a lot of paving going on as well. Our new building out behind the middle school is on course to get finished. They're doing a lot of work inside there now, getting ready to probably in the next two or three weeks, put the the major garage doors in there so they can get some air conditioning on. So it makes it a little easier for the drywall and mud and joints, all that to dry out so they can sand. So that's helpful. The Elliott project is finishing up with the HVAC in each room. Frank Hammond is getting a little bit closer. They've closed out some rooms already. So we're actually getting in there to wax some floors. It's not all the way completed yet. The middle school, we had some delays on some flooring. Hopefully, I think we got most of that, so we're going to get the classrooms buttoned up. And the high school is, again, getting to the point, it's getting closer to being finished. Mr. Melby and I and Mr. Wallace were in the natatorium today, and they are working on the pool tile. They're starting to put the tile back on the floor that they had taken up to fix some of the joints or expansion joints. So that seems to be going very well at the pool. So hopefully, everything's either going to be done a little bit early or definitely on time, as we're being told right now unless there's some snafus. There's one issue really, though, with the power out at the new building. Still waiting for NIPSCO to put in a permanent power source out there. So that's what I've been informed from PSI. Second thing we'll talk about is the reentry plans. As probably everybody knows, Munster seems to be a little bit lagging behind. And we have been spending a lot of time. There's so many things we've gone into this. We've also been working hard to, like today, you approved the Cintas contract. They're guaranteeing that we won't run out of the major cleaning and hand sanitizer that we needed. Mr. Melby and I have had numerous conversations about the difficulty of obtaining cleaning supplies and materials. We also are buying some disinfecting machines as well. They're they're pretty expensive. But I think they're going to help us clean a lot better than we have these, we call them bombs for anything better, but it's a canister that sort of shoots out disinfectant throughout a room if you have a COVID outbreak in a particular classroom. Mr. Trippenfeldus and I and Dr. Stokes have been going through our plan. We're following the in-class plan from the state, but also modifying it to meet our needs as well, making sure we put in the proper procedures. We're working with our building principals on schedules. Those are going to be in there as well. Working with Mr. Melby on transportation and procedures for transportation. And he's also been helping us out with the food service because that's intricate, as well as working with the with the building principals on where are we feeding the kids? How are we feeding the kids? When are we going to feed the kids? There's going to be talk about hallway procedures, riding the bus procedures, going to the cafeteria procedures, using the restroom procedures, in the classroom procedures, mask procedures. So it's it's been fairly complicated. We're trying to think of as many things as we can. I'm sure that even when it's done, it won't be done. And as I am been following today, several of the schools around us may be changing their plans as well that got out early, and now they're making adjustments to this, to their plans. As Mr. Castro said at the beginning of this meeting, we hope to have the a draft out by Friday. And and our board will have it for about a week to review. The community, then, if they want to comment on it, I believe they can send in their comments to us. And on Wednesday of next week, the board will have a work session to go over any questions or concerns or changes they'd like to see us make in the plan. And we may, we may still be making changes from the draft just because we don't know specifically any federal changes, state changes, or local changes that may occur from now till next Wednesday because it seems to constantly be changing. It's kind of a moving target in terms of reentering school for the next school year. I think you'll see in the plan, at least we have two two models that we're looking at. The one is a five-day entry into school, and the other is a remote or e-learning type of situation. But it will not be the e-learning process that we used in the spring. It's going to be changed, and Dr. Stokes has been working with our principals on that as well and will work with our teachers. So I just wanted to mention, those are just kind of a general overview of that. I know people are wanting to see this, and I can say, as if you're patient, we're trying to get as much things in there and keeping it as accurate as possible. But I will say it'll probably change because that seems to be the nature of the beast with these reentry plans with what I just spoke of. Finally, one of the things I think that Mr. Melby spoke to, but I think is still a concern for us is going to be finances moving forward. With opening school, there are so many costs, huge costs to opening school from the PPE to the cleaning supplies, to additional staff, possibly additional training. There's just so many things going into this. And so we're we're going to try to stay on top of the finances, but this is going to be a costly affair as we open up schools. We're hoping that either the state or the federal government will provide us with some additional funding later. I know the CARES Act, we've relied on that right now. But we're hoping for additional funding to support these points because, you know, right now, we're, as we get started, if we get to the five-day, if we're able to bring students back for five days and those who want to come back, or everybody wants to come back, we still have to keep them safe and protected from masks to disinfecting classrooms, doorknobs, restrooms, locker areas. I just keep, I could go on and on and on of all the things we have to disinfect. And we have to do that regularly throughout the day. That takes a lot of cleaning products, classroom desks. We're also purchasing Plexiglas, I think, well, I guess it's a Plexiglas type of product that is like a shield for all of our students to be portable, for them to sit on top of their desks, to protect them and other students as well. It's another layer of protection beyond the masks or face shields that might be used as well. Also, we're putting Plexiglas up for teachers who want that in front of their desks. We have that in the reception areas and in the office for anyone who wants the extra Plexiglas, and it's being installed from the ceiling as well. And those cost quite a bit of money to buy in a setup. So overall, this is going to be expensive, but we feel that we need to make every effort to keep our children and our staff safe in this time if we're going to bring everybody, if we're going to try to bring as many people back as we can to school to keep them all safe. So that's all part in the plan, but the finances are, this is expensive. This is above what we had planned or projected for, so we're going to stay on top of that. And we don't know how long this is going to be. Is it going to be a year? Is it going to be two years? It's going to be three years. We hope that there's a vaccination or some other way that this disease can be treated so that we can feel safe to be out and congregate and do the other important things that everybody's talked about, the, you know, the social, emotional learning pieces and also just the academics of having kids back in class with their teachers. Because we feel that is the best approach to take to keep our students learning and engaged in the learning process. So those are three areas I just wanted to mention tonight that are, that we're focusing. Well, just three of many that we're focusing on, but I just want to share those three for the night.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hendricks. Those are some pretty extensive comments. And just a little bit of a preview as to what this plan might look like. And just hearing you speak for a few minutes there kind of touches on the depth and gravity of what you guys are trying to accomplish. As I mentioned in my comments earlier, this is literally trying to take a detailed framework of every aspect of educating children from the time they get on the bus until the time they're done with our day. So I just want to, I just want to reiterate that there are so many things that, you know, folks may not even think about that that you guys have to address. And a lot of those things you were mentioning, something is, as, you know, passing in the hall or things of that nature. So thank you for for touching on that. And we look forward to the ability to share a preview of that plan and then that final plan, the 22nd. All right. So moving on now to 7.1, announcements. Future meetings. Again, a reminder, Wednesday, July 22, we will have a public work session at 5:30 PM and a special board meeting in person at 7:00 PM. There will be more information on that, but we want to make sure that people are aware. That is the meeting in which we will be discussing the dissemination of this plan, the final version, or as final as it could be at that point, and our votes to approve that plan. Following that, August 10, Monday, August 10, 2020, will be our next regularly scheduled school board meeting, which will be held at 7:00 PM. We will advise as to whether or not that will be in person or via Zoom, but. But I guess we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Any, that is all for the announcements. Moving on to 7.2, adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move that we adjourn. John Doorty.
Second Rhona Stoic.
There is a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, or Mrs. Higginson, do you need to read the roll?
John Castro.
Aye.
John Doorty.
Aye.
Rhona Stoic.
Aye.
Melissa Higginson, aye.
All right, the ayes have it for zero. Meeting is adjourned at 7:50 PM. Thank you very much for this opportunity and do not forget to log out of Board Docs.
Well done, Mr. Castro.